Thank you. Thank you all for being here. We don't seem to have our student reps here. Move on. Did anybody want to speak tonight? You need to sign up on the signup sheet. Good to see so many of you. All right, then we will consider any additions to the agenda. Moving on, we'll move on. With someone make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll say second.
Moved in second, any discussion? During none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, we're moving on to reorganization of the board. This is an annual event for board chair and vice chair. And so we're going to do that at this time. And so at this time, I'll call for nominations for board chair.
Wait, nominate Rhonda.
Rhonda's been nominated.
Second. Or is that how I do it?
Rhonda's been nominated.
Second. Or is that how I do it? Yeah. Yeah, second.
All right. If there are no other nominations, we'll call the nominations closed and we will have a roll call vote. So we will start with.
Yep. I'll go ahead. Absolutely. I will go ahead and start with the roll call. I'm just going to go down and call each of your names and just yes or no. Karen?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Paula? Ashley?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
It is voted unanimously.
All right. So at this time that. I'm a little confused. Okay, okay, we did a little out of order. So, all right, then Rhonda is going to be the new board chair. And so.
I would like to take just a moment to recognize Paula for all the hard work, dedication and love that she's given, not just throughout the last few years that she's been board chair, but for the last almost thirty years that she's served as a school board director. We are honored for and cherish her wisdom and leadership and so glad that she's part of this team and just really especially grateful for giving so much during this time when you've got personally so much going on in your life and the sacrifices that you've made on behalf of our students is just amazing. So thank you for what you do. We love you so much. All right. We're supposed to switch places, but can we just stay where we are? We'll just do this. Now I would, yes, I would like to open nominations for the position of assistant chair or vice president.
I nominate Paulette. Ms. Paulette.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
I know it seems strange, but just call me through procedure. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? There are time, are there any further nominations? We will close the nominations and we will hit forward for them.
Okay, and they will go through and yes or no. Karen?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Oh. Ashley?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
Did you want to?
No, I just would like to say that I appreciate the opportunity that I've had. I've served as board chair numerous times over the years and it's been a privilege to serve on the Eatonville School Board and to meet other people from other districts and be able to brag on Eatonville. And I've served with JSM tenth superintendent and this group here constitutes thirty board members that I've served with. And it's just been a sheer pleasure to be a part of something that makes a difference for kids and for community.
Well, our protocol, was there anybody else who'd like to share or express any gratitude towards Paulette?
Well, yeah, just.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you so much for everything.
Yeah, let's just write on.
You could go on for hours. Thank you so much.
You're a wonderful mentor.
Yeah.
We love you.
I'm just thinking of yourself here and willing to do what you do with the monkey hats that you wear.
We are just indeed grateful and so grateful to have you continuing to work with us. All right, moving on in the agenda, we're going to go to hearings of individuals and groups. No? So now we're going to go to reports and presentations and we'll start with our transportation presentation by Bonnie.
I'm Bonnie McNichol, I'm transportation director for our district and I would like to announce that this year for our winter inspection, which is a surprise to us when they show up, we have a hundred percent. We had no. That's the first time in the last five years that that's happened, just after our winter inspection. And this is my, our mechanic assistant, he and we. And these, this great family. Very, very hard to make sure that things are coming back up to where they should have been in the first place. And I don't see any, any glitch coming hopefully for our summer inspection, which we expected may. They've done a fantastic job.
Thank you. We're so, so grateful. We have learned to appreciate transportation more than ever.
So when it doesn't work, it's very bad.
Yeah. Yes, for all of us and for you. So Bonnie, is there anything else you wanted to share with us about transportation?
We have no uncovered routes. We are a couple of drivers that are starting training for setting. We're doing fairly well. Very proud of our.
Such a great time to celebrate. Thank you. Thank you so much.
That's a best.
All right, enrollment report, Krista.
Okay, so I don't have a ton to touch on with enrollment. We're still climbing. And we are climbing in bilingual and we're just climbing all around, but we, I do, I'm cautious because we usually take a dip in January, February. So I'm grateful for the climb so that we can average that to be where we want to be, which is above, a little bit above budget. So that's where we're at on enrollment.
And then we'll just go ahead and transfer, go ahead and go over your year end and your budget status, however you want to.
Okay, so we have the year end report I have. I hope you guys are ready for this because you might have information overload tonight. I have a lot in here that I don't normally put in just to help give you as much information as possible from a high level perspective. So it was quite a process putting this together. So on the first page with enrollment highlights. Okay, next thing. Thank you. Okay, so our, so we're looking again back on twenty-three, twenty-four. I know that sounds like a long time ago now. But our budgeted FTE was nineteen sixty-nine and that includes everything. That includes open doors, ALE, running start, everything. So you, we used a, an attrition model to forecast to our budgeted enrollment. So we didn't use roll-up numbers last year. We used it, we used attrition models. And that actually ended up bringing us below budget, including TK. So we're grateful for those TK students who helped bring us up closer to budget. And then just a note for those who aren't familiar, enrollment is measured in FTE or full-time equivalent. And that's so that we can pick up on those part-time enrollment numbers, maybe a high school student who's only partially enrolled or a homeschool student who's partially enrolled and fluctuations on her students coming in and out of the district. So that's the summary on enrollment.
I have a quick question, but it may, you may be answering it later. If you are, then just I'll wait. But you mentioned our TK students kind of bolstering our student numbers. Is there, I've heard that there was some legislation about not funding. Where are we landing on that? Is that a consideration? Are we concerned about that, Dracy's not even had?
What have you heard? The, in the last early childhood training that I was in, they said to don't stop growing your TKs. So just wait.
Yeah, okay, so I.
And that was a training yesterday morning, so.
I was talking to some legislators and that is a concern that they're going to pull that funding. So just as we're looking forward to our budgeting, we need to be concerned.
They're asking us not to expand.
Yeah.
That's what I've heard from superintendents meetings are that they're asking us not to expand, but they're working hard to people we know.
And that means we need to be advocates for our communities and we need to get the word out, families need to get the word out, but it's important in our community. Okay, thank you.
And a, and a good part of the funding that we got in twenty-three, twenty-four for TK was actually federal funding.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so it was a mixture of federal and state funding. So we're, we're, this year is exclusively state funding. So we'll see how it ends up next year.
I don't guess, what is transitional?
I'm going to let Sally or Dracy explain that.
It's for four-year-olds. So it's the between preschool and kindergarten. So it's your transition time. So we do early academic learning, academics, things like that and prep for kindergarten. It's full day. So kids go to school full day. With a certified teacher.
And is it open to everyone? Are you just targeting certain students?
Um, I don't know. Our policy has four areas on which kids can qualify to be in the program. They usually have to show an area, either it can be low income, not have a preschool opportunity. Have an IED or they are eligible by screening and they show some needs. Okay. Expenditures by program. Oh, where are you? Okay, this is just a nice little part chart to give you some overview of where, which program our expenditures are in. It's important to note that support services includes multiple departments, including administration here at the district office, but also food services, transportation, grounds, custodian maintenance, just the whole bunch of the support staff. This didn't really change from last year too awful much. We have, we might have fluctuated by like a percent, but it almost mirrors the pre- previous year. So regular instruction was down by a percent, but Fed was up one percent. Support services was down one percent and COVID spending was up one percent. Everything else was the same. So it's pretty much exactly the same as twenty-two. Expenditures by object. This one was even closer to the same. Salaries, both certificated and classified were exactly the same as twenty-two, twenty-three. I don't know how that happened, but it did. And benefits were down one percent. Purchase services were down one percent to eleven and I'll go into what, what's included in that in a minute. COVID spending was up one percent as we finished out our last year of COVID spending. And this is a interesting one. Capital outlay is up to three percent. And I'll explain what, what that means and why that is what it is because it's not very typical for us to have three percent in capital outlay. Usually it's more in the one percent to zero percent range. Next one. And this is why. So just kind of setting the stage for the next couple of slides. So the school district accounting is, so we follow a six hundred and thirty-two page school district accounting annual. Six hundred and thirty-two pages. We don't always follow GASB, which is the government accounting. God, I had it written down. It's basically an advisory board for accounting and they issue guidance on various things and one of them is on leases. So districts adopted GASB eighty-seven, which is guidance related to accounting for leases. And what that does, oh, it feels like, I think we're missing a text on there for some reason.
Oh, I did that one.
Is it one of those fancy ones that you push another, like one more time and it shows up?
I'm not that fancy. Okay, so it is here. So, so Government Accounting Standards Board. So everybody in the country follows this. Washington schools are, are its own animal and we don't always follow GASB. Which is why we're often issued a modified opinions at the end of the year by our auditors. But basically what this says is that we need to report our leases as a liability for better visibility. So that people that your average reader that's looking at our financial statement can see that we have these long-term liabilities. It's important to know, like if you were to purchase a company, you'd want to know what liabilities are on the books and same thing for the people who may want to buy bonds if we were to refinance bonds and they want to know what our financial state is. We don't have a lot of leases. We don't have a lot of things that are reported under this and they're long-term agreements. They may not be copiers and postage meters. And those kinds of things, they could be long-term leases and other things. So, but the moral of the story. And I think, and, and why capital outlay is so off and what's unique about this is we record these expenditures twice. And this is really weird. So, and I asked multiple questions and I talked to Wasbo and, and asked the question four and five different ways. So basically with any leases that we, now if copier machines, we record them as an expenditure when we acquire them. And as a lump sum, whether it's in devices. And then we record them every year that we use them. So you are double lien your expenditures over the period of the lease agreement.
So help me understand, a lump sum for the full cost of the lease, the first year? And then the additional lit cost of the lease annually?
Yes.
Every year after that?
Yes. So like we signed up for the Trifer leases, that accounted for seven hundred and twenty thousand of that. And you're going to see a part of that for the next four years. It's really weird.
Do we get that money cash or like at the end of it?
Or like, or it, or does it? No, you just. You're just showing it as an expenditure. You don't have money coming in and out. I mean, you only have the money going out once.
So the difference.
So we're not depreciating. Every year we pay the, every year when we pay it.
Oh, we don't pay, we don't pay the ones on some. It just takes it out of our expenditure balance.
Okay, so it's, it's just budgets.
Yes, but it kind of double budgets, but I would assume it has to.
Yes, we have to double budget. You are correct. So the first year, like with our Trifer leases for Chromebooks this year, we showed seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars on the books for acquisition. We acquired the lease, seven hundred and twenty thousand. Now for the next four years, we will spend that lease. So now we have essentially spent it twice, even though we only have money going out once every year. It's really weird. I don't like it because it gives the appearance of double the cost and it's not, that's not true. So it's just important to, and then they want you to record it in capital outlay rather than in.
Both, both items are delineated in capital outlay. Not just the annual.
I'll have to double check that. I believe so, but.
That's interesting.
So the good side of this is it gives you increased visibility for those liabilities, right? You're showing them on the books. You're showing that we have them outstanding. So when you're budgeting, you're, you're, they're there. You're not going to miss them. And you as a board can know what we're, what we're into for the long term.
So we can't like have a heart attack when we see that we, you know, feel like we've already paid for it and then we're still paying for it annually. So thank you for making us aware of that because probably we've had some phone calls.
Yes, very odd. And more reporting, we get more reporting. So, because I have to calculate a threshold that we report those, but threshold's pretty small. So we're pretty much reporting everything. So that is lease acquisitions, GASB eighty-seven. So with that, we'll go to the next slide and it just helps give perspective at why our MSOC total is so high. Our total MSOC total is seven point three. So you fit your seven hundred and twenty thousand of that was lease acquisition. COVID expenditures, six hundred and twelve. So you're looking at one point three of inflated expenditures that we normally wouldn't have from year to year. Okay, so MSOC, so material supplies and operating costs. So you have your supplies, you have your purchase services. You have capital outlay and you have a little bit for travel. What I wanted to show here was how much we're actually paying, like what are our top ten expenses in purchase services? It's pretty astounding, some of them. And then they're under dues and fees, one twenty-nine, seven, one, six. What is in dues and fees? A whole lot of little things. There's a whole lot. Memberships, rentals, like graduation rentals, permits, food service permits, kitchen permits, elevator operating permits, all kinds of, all kinds of fees. CPR cards, bad debt. Food service debt. We had to send several, several, over more than seven thousand dollars away this year for debt that we could not collect. That was included in that. Hopefully we get some of that. Repairs and maintenance at three hundred and forty-four thousand is a wide variety of things. Equipment repair, whether it's in the kitchens or to grounds equipment, to HVAC, to lighting, to everything you can think of that needs to be repaired across the district, pretty much goes in that bucket.
May I ask a question? Psychologists and speech services. I see the total amount there. How many employees do we employ? I know that we are hiring that out because we don't have full-time people here.
That was what, we had one, last year we had one psychologist that was full-time that we contracted with and then we had one, I was thinking about therapy, we had the one. Two speech. Was it two?
Two speech pathologists last year.
And they're contracted through separate services?
Last year was different. So I can't, I can't speak to how they were contracted last year.
Let me give you more information on that because I want to say two, but that seems really high, but that could be. I thought it was two. No. Well, we pay them a lump sum total and they.
They're not our employees.
They're not our employees. Correct. No, these ones were not. That was Brett Cardinal or something. I think it's like therapy. And then the payments to other school districts, ESDs, we pay to have our Skyward student system and RDS financial system. We have to pay to maintain that and get the support for that. And then Washington School from the Blinds included in that. So just a couple of things in that category. Closely to near, let's see, about a hundred and thirteen thousand is we have in a transportation for our homeless students population. Lot of purchase services. A lot. So supplies. Some of the big ones, food, milk, tech-related supplies and fuel. Those are the biggies out of that, out of that one, out of that.
A bunch of all increased.
Which of all increased. And they increased again this year. So capital outlay, there's those lease acquisitions. And then we had some E-rate funding that went in and out of there that we got reimbursed for. Kitchen equipment, we had some kitchen equipment that failed. Everything's aging from the renovation in oh eight, oh nine. So we're going to see some more of that. So stay tuned. And then we had a couple of white fleet vans that arrived a little bit later than we expected. So we ended up having to pay for them during twenty-three, twenty-four. Travel, a big part of the travel was extracurricular travel to competition and various things. And then itinerary services. So we have a lot of staff, like our nursing staff, our speech staff, OTPT. Who else am I forgetting? That travel around the district to make sure everybody receives services and the mileage and technology. Anybody that travels around the districts to visit multiple buildings, that cost is in here too, because we have to reimburse them for their mileage. And that's at the IRS standard mileage rate. And then there's a little bit of professional development in there per various things, various departments. So that is probably the most informative pack slide you have tonight. So I guess we'll move on to the next. So expenditures to budget, so your budget is green, your actual costs were in orange. So certificated salaries was a little bit higher than budgeted. And purchase services was quite a bit higher than budgeted and capital outlay. Now supplies and materials, one thing to note about that is it's budgeted higher green because it has the capacity in there. So that's always going to be higher than what actual is for supplies. Now, that was our budget. Budget remaining seven twenty-two. We did tap into some capacity last year to make things run. And, okay, this one's a little more complicated. So don't feel like you have to understand all of it. But basically, I've broken the revenue budget out from a capacity to show what it looks like with capacity and without capacity. So the top part is without capacity. So you can see without that capacity, we've surpassed our revenue budget. But if you add the capacity back in, we have not met our budget. So it just shows that that's not, that doesn't become a reality until it becomes a reality.
Will you explain capacity?
Yeah, so we put, so because the school board approves, is responsible for legally authorizing the budget. Rather than having them come back every time we get a large grant, we build in budget capacity. So say we need thirty-five million, they're not going to authorize thirty-five million. They're going to authorize thirty-seven million. Because if we get a five hundred thousand dollar grant, like we have been doing. They're going to be back approving budget revisions every three months. And so it's just better to build that capacity in on both the revenue side and the expenditure side to make it easier on everybody, to just keep things flowing a little smoother. Now, I did not do this for the expenditure side, but it would be, it would be very similar. It would be similar. We would have busted our budget without the capacity.
Real quick, before you go on, I just wanted to offer to your young family, if you guys don't want to stay and listen to all this, you're welcome to leave without offending us.
Cookies out there.
What young kid doesn't want to listen to a bunch of?
Thank you for being here. It's good to see you. Bye, guys. Thank you for your.
So yeah, the capacity is always a fun one to explain. It, it was hard for me to understand even the first couple of years that I was here. What is it? What is it? It's not real, but we have it, what is it? So revenues by source. This just gives us a good idea of where our revenues come from. So, and this is always pretty consistent. So our, so our local funding makes up about twenty percent of our budget or our revenues. State is seventy-three and seven percent for federal. And just a little bit deeper dive into the local revenues. The twenty percent of local revenues is not entirely levy. It also includes timber taxes, swimming lessons, creeschool tuition, investment earnings, donations. Food service meal payments, just a smattering of different odds and ends, so. Okay, state revenues, I won't go into all the details of this, but I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of how much we got for each category in a nice summarized page, rather than having you read the eighty-seven page apportionment report, that's a little bit easier to look at this. So state revenues accounted for seventy-three percent of our total district revenues. And you can see the categories that are very small that we could maybe use more help with. Don't feel any questions, I'll just move on to the next one.
Just noting that that money that came from the state in many of those areas is not fully funded, what we pay in those areas.
And interestingly, I was, I was reading today the apportionment report. Well, yesterday as I was preparing this, and there's a lot of our budgets, like LAP and bilingual. They have a formula that they, they use to come up with those allocations, there is no supply money in there. So they fund staffing and PD days, but there's no supplies in there for those programs who might need extra stuff. Okay, let's see, federal revenues. I'd imagine our federal revenues will be a little bit lower for this year for twenty-four, twenty-five. Because our COVID dollars have inflated that. But there that, that OSPI one thirty-one, that was our TK. Oh, it's under OSPI. And then some E-rate and federal food services. Our commodities were a little bit higher at ninety, this year they're gonna be more in the fifty-seven, forty-seven to fifty-seven thousand dollar range. So we had a nice little boost this year with the commodities.
And we, do we still have two or three elementaries that are getting all three of our, all three of our elementaries are getting breakfast and lunch?
Yeah, and I did some preliminary calculations and it looks like they probably will qualify next year.
And is it forty percent now, the new rate forty-two percent?
Yeah, so they've got that. They've got that, so they are all free, but we have two separate programs. And so Columbia Crest is CEP Community Eligibility Provision, they call it. Whereas Warehouser and EES are free under State House Bill twelve thirty-eight. And just for one meal reimbursement, like for example, breakfast for one of those schools. You're looking at like six or seven different reimbursement rates, so you might have five cents here. Two fifty here, thirty-seven cents here, and a copay for forty cents here. So it's very difficult to, as to forecast what your revenues are gonna be for the whole year. We have to put those on the spreadsheet so we can, and forecast what our, what our revenue will be at the end of this year.
And it would seem like those, since they're telling us that they qualify for free lunches, that we would fully fund that. I'm assuming they don't fully fund.
We will definitely be in the red this year, without a doubt. Probably over budget in the red. Because food costs have skyrocketed again this year, so we're currently gonna be probably at least two hundred thousand dollars more than budgeted in food costs. I think it was like two thirty in food costs for this year.
Is that, that's for all the schools though, not?
That's for all of the schools. And that was after budget, after already budgeting for an increase in food costs. We did get some, part of our revenue this last year was supply chain assistance, so we were able to use some of that to cover our milk costs. We won't get supply chain assistance this year. So this is just a summary of everything. Are we getting fund balance at about five million? Revenues and expenditures with a net reduction of one point six million to our fund balance. And that is the third year in a row that we've taken a dip in fund balance. Just because of rising costs and trying to catch every, everybody up. And I think it's really worth noting that this, last year twenty-three, twenty-four, we're done with ESSER. So we no longer have any COVID funds, whether it's ESSER or food services. COVID money has pretty much come to an end for us and the other districts.
Can we just recognize your responsible spending and budgeting where other school districts right now are in, what is it called? Binding conditions, because they were not live for the COVID dollars, so thank you so much for, thank you very much for your hard work. All of your stuff, everyone.
So I met with Puget Sound ESD, our fiscal ESD. Earlier, towards the end of last week. And we went through some figures because I'm trying to figure out where we're gonna end this year. Where do we think? And they have this really cool model put together. And they are watching all of the districts, and there's a lot of districts that are there's a few in binding conditions, but there's a whole lot more that are flagged for monitoring.
Are we still outside of that flag?
He didn't share that with me. I have a feeling we probably are flagged only because of the direction that the fund balance has been drawn down. But it doesn't mean that we can't stabilize that. We do want to bring it down to a more reasonable and realistic level, especially when we're trying to catch up with all of these learning gaps. It makes sense now that we would be drawing that down for that purpose. That's that. So, so of that ending fund balance, that was three point four five seven. What is that comprised of? Because it doesn't just go in one bucket. It gets divided depending on what, what the school district's accounting manual describes. So we have some funds for carryover such as LAP. If we don't use all of our funds. That goes in restricted for carryover. All of our teachers get what's called idea money, not set up, not special ed idea. Extra money to use for supplemental supplies for their classes. And if they don't spend it all, it gets held in that bucket for carryover. Also in there is donations. So there's just a smattering of things, if it's, if it's got a special purpose, it goes in that restricted for carryover. It's held with a special budget code. Prepays in inventory, this is just continuing what we've done for quite a few years now. So we, we prepay our insurance and then show it as used this year. So that just can, that just rolls over every year. And then committed to economic stabilization was something that you all put forth a few years ago, just anticipating that the COVID funds would run out and we would need some of that to backfill. So that's just a little bit of remaining, remaining funds that we have left to use. And then our unassigned minimum fund balance. That ends up being that, divided by our expenditures, ends up leaving us with about a five point eight percent fund balance. So then we can go on to the other funds, because it's we also have capital projects, we have debt service for our bonds, ASV and transportation. So first one, let's look at capital projects, because it has the most going on, well, next to ASV. So capital projects funds, we did have some funds left over from our levy. From the last levy, and we had some funds still in there from our impact fees, so both of those are in this. That'll be on the next slide. So our revenues, we bring in our capital levy revenues. Our county impact fees from rural Pierce County, not town of Eatonville, but just rural Pierce County. And then interest on investments, that's divided proportionately between those two funds. We have to divide that interest based on that balance every single month. So you might have more money, more interest that goes into capital levy and less that goes into impact fees every month. So that's kind of a fun little exercise every month. And then our expenditures that we have. So we finished. I shouldn't say finished, we paid off more of the security cameras. We did rekey all of the keys on the perimeter of the buildings to bring enhanced security. We had a lot of keys out there that were just out there that we didn't know who had what. And so this helped to kind of, to help bring this in for better security for our students and staff. We completed the EBD sped special ed classroom, which is for emotional and behavioral disorder. So at higher behavior needs, we finished that project. And then we paid for some geotech services. So that we can know what we were in for, should we pass our levy for the track and field. So that was, those were our expenditures, and let's see what the balance looks like. So you can see to end twenty-three, twenty-four. We have a nice chunk in impact fees. That we can use to expand classrooms if we need. So we're kind of watching that and seeing where, because we have some areas that are kind of bursting up for themes. And then our levy proceeds that will roll over to, to meet our needs for this year, so.
How long do we have access to the impact fees? Is it five years?
I thought it was ten. Yeah, yeah. But I think we've spent about, we're, we're spending at a pretty good pace, so I think we've spent about half of what we brought in. And we typically, I typically see about twelve to fifteen thousand dollars a month. That comes in, so it takes quite a while to build up to where we can relocate.
That's not even affordable right there, so you have to be able to save it.
It takes a while. I guess, the only thing that I would say is we are working on playgrounds, we're in the kind of that last stage. We're ready to break ground. Columbia Crest will be the first one, because it is the oldest playground. But that will, that will come out of the levy proceeds. And then right around the corner, it'll be here before you know it, is the track and field. That was approved in the last levy. We're hoping that if we can rearrange some things and maybe get some extra funding, that maybe we can possibly get a stadium out of it. But we did pass that levy for track and field. And we're gonna do our, our best to get some outside funding so that maybe we can get a stadium too. Make that money go as far as it can. Okay, the next one. You are doing some fancy stuff there. So debt service, super boring. We're just paying off our debt from the renovation at the high school. At Warehouser and EES from oh eight, and we'll continue paying on that for another
I'm still exhausted for running that bond. All those years ago, I still think about it.
So we did pay off one of them, we have four left. Okay, this is the funnest part is ASV. I think Cassie said her daughter was in this picture. So they had a lot going on last year. I think they're pretty much at full operating mode now. Lot of revenues and expenditures, they did increase their fund balance, so that makes me wonder if they're saving for something special or what's going on? Special trip or something. They're saving for the next band trip.
It's gonna be one heck of a prom.
And then just to break down a balance by school. So the largest of course of a high school, because they have the most activity in the most groups, so makes sense. Okay, next, transportation. Okay, so we have, so the only thing that goes in and out of this fund is yellow buses. No white vans, no enough yellow buses. So every August we get what's referred to as depreciation, to help us replace our fleet. And then we get some interest earnings on that too. So, just buses and major engineering repairs, although I don't think we've done a major engineering repair out of this. So we do have three buses on order and expected in May.
And we have one being delivered next week.
We have three on order though, right?
We have three on order, but this is the replacement for the ones that was from September.
Or total this year.
Or total this year. We're trying to get our, our ancient fleet.
And it's important to note that we don't, we just use these funds for the base model, that's what the depreciation is intended for. So if we need extra cameras or undercarriage, undercarriage storage, any extras. Those come out of general fund, so they're not supposed to come out of TVF. Thank you so much. Moving stuff around. So the next thing we have on the agenda is budget status. There's really not a lot to report in that because it's so early in the year and we don't really get a good idea and sense of where we're gonna end. Well, the further on we go. But again, I met with Puget Sound ESD. And where he has this tool that would just impress you on his Excel skills. So it'll give us a better idea where we're gonna end, and I'm working on that to give us the best possible forecast. And then I have been working with Forecast Shive on that and comparing our S two O three, which is our revenue calculator. The states versus theirs, and just really diving into a greater level of detail than I, we have in the, than I have in the past. And so we'll, we'll, we'll see where this takes us the rest of the year. But I think one of the things that, that is interesting to know is in your, in your packet, you have the cash flow. Sheet, I think it's the last page. And you'll notice one of the months, our cash flow will potentially be down to six hundred thousand for that one month. So it's getting to that point where we've got to really spread out our cash flow, making sure we're claiming our grants every month and spreading our revenue out and expenditures out as evenly as possible. So we don't run into a situation with negative cash flow any one given month. Because apportionment doesn't come uneven, we have to plan for that.
Which is why we have our fund balance.
That's why we have our fund.
That's why we have our fund balance. Not because we're trying to save money or to hide money, but it's just sometimes the government doesn't pay us, we can still pay.
Okay, thank you so much. We are going to go on to new business, approval of Columbia Crest Academy's overnight outdoor camp. Well, I didn't really have anything to say.
You don't want to give us a pitch, this is your shark take moment.
I can give you an overall, like, okay, what and why and how. Back doing Columbia Crest to my understanding, and this was before me, back when I used to do substitute teaching and volunteer.
Back doing, uh, Columbia Crest to my understanding, and this was before me, back when I used to do substitute teaching in volunteer forever. Um. Went to Camp Seymour. But whoever was in charge of that, let it go during the year of COVID. Camp Seymour took Columbia Crest off their list. And for their in weight, put the next person. And when I asked to come back last year, they said, I am beneath the bottom of the totem pole. And um, that means that it's gonna be very hard for CC to get back into Camp Seymour. I understand that everyone really loved Camp Seymour. So what did we do? We looked around for a place that could provide our kids um, with different experiences than they're accustomed to. Um, so we, we found Black Diamond, which is in Auburn, um. Black Diamond is if you want to be physical, you know, it's very good. It hits some social emotional points. But where it missed for um, a high quality outdoor school is all of the standards that we wanted to hit. So, um. When, when we went and we experienced, and I had um, this loftus with us last year, who's very experienced teacher, and she had mentioned, hey, you know, where's the curriculum, where we, we need to. Um, these kids need more experiences than this. And being new to us, okay, let me go do my research. And um, April of last year, I went to my first outdoor schools, Washington training. And it was, it was very eye opening to what is really expected at an overnight camp and what the state expects for the children to do. And whenever you apply for that grant and they play, they pay for um, the amount per child to go. Um, at the end of the year, you have to fill out um, a form. And that form says very specifically, which standards did you meet? Um, now I'm a very anti-political person and I do a lot of deep thinking. If they're asking this question, there's a reason. If they're providing funding, eventually, will this funding be based on past net requirements? So if they're asking you to provide an experience for children, will they continue to provide funding if you meet their every single year? Well, I want to be on this list because Columbia Crest needs the money for other kids to be on this list. So what do we do? Um, I've met with the people with outdoor schools, Washington. I know them. I said pretty good because I've spent like five, was it ten days total with them. Greg and Roberta are some pretty wonderful people. And Roberta, I had talked to her about Black Diamond and, and um, we had this big huge round table um, discussion where the sites are there, educators are there. Uh, we're only two public schools were there. But anyway, so the discussion came out, well, just look for an accredited site. You know, what, what site? So. Um. Warm Beach Conference Center is in Stanwood, Washington. And it, it is a distance away from Columbia Crest, but what it provides is a circle. We are at the top of the watershed. And our kids go out across the street and do water testing and they experience ecology of uh, the watershed, the Nisqually River, which I, I do some of that too. And then we go to the creek, Sahara Creek, which is also part of the Nisqually watershed. So what they're getting a really good grasp of is freshwater. But the ocean is the end of it. And so with bringing them the experience of where does freshwater end? What does it look like in the statuary? How does that affect the ocean? Everything that we do in Ashford ends up at the ocean. So what's our responsibility? And so Warm Beach kind of meets that. They're like the end. And they're also, if we think about our, our journey, our personal journey at Columbia Crest and what we're doing this year. It's kind of like a big assessment for fifth and sixth grade. Since we want to do it in May, May twenty-seventh through thirtieth. Um. We were uh, allocated twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Of that twenty-three, five hundred dollars, we expect to spend twenty-three thousand two hundred and seven dollars, of which, because I did not know what the para amount was. I put in myself a certified, which is over budgeted, which gives me a little bit more money to play with. Um, I do know that there is one student not going. That's a hundred and thirty-five dollars times four, which we, um, Warm Beach will only target for warm bodies. So again, that's um, warm body students. Uh, that is, comes in under that twenty-three five. The twenty-three five includes um, meal lodging, everything at Warm Beach. Plus uh, transportation there back. Uh, the cost for substitutes, the cost for me and a stipend. And if we wanted to purchase anything at Costco for out, like food, um, like snacks, because they might not, I'm not just saying Costco's because I shop at Costco, but um, like snacks we want to take with us. So kids have that uh, food security. They recognize that kids might need that outside of the three different mealtimes. That's also part of that funding. Uh. I think our kids need to go. And whenever I was talking to Greg, who is the principal, like, like he's the dude. He's the one you want to talk to anyway. He's like the Mr. Brower of But anyway, he was like, go the four days, go the four days, go the three nights. And so I sent him our numbers and he says, you just send for fifth and sixth grade. Don't just send fifth grade. Just, you have a small school, send both of them. We're gonna pay for fifth and sixth grade. Um. And so that's what we're doing.
Thank you for building that relationship and for applying for the grant. Getting the grant.
Thank you.
Supporting the kids and um.
Oh, I'm sorry. One, one last thing. Sorry. So, um, the reason behind Warm Beach. Although it is the end, right? It's the ocean, the statuary, all that. Warm Beach is also the sister camp to Black Diamond. Um, it's a new formed relationship. And uh, Warm Beach hired a curriculum director. I've met her and she was hired from Chicago. Her like resume is impressive. Like she's got all the sped ed stuff. She was like asking me a thousand questions about IEPs and 504s already. And I'm like, hmm, so, but she's prepared for it, which is great, you know? It's outdoor fed for all. Overnight camp for every kid. Just period. So, um, but since they're a sister camp, what we hope to do is build it a rotation and build a relationship with them. And that's what triggered that. So Warm Beach twenty-four, twenty-five. Black Diamond, because they'll have the experience this year with their director and build their program. The next year, those kids go on, new batch comes in, Black Diamond, Warm Beach. Then flip flop, those kids that didn't get it, they get the best of mountain. And then they'll get ocean. And they'll get both. And that gives you without going to Eastern Washington, but if you really wanted to know, I would like to do north, south, east, west. That's just me.
She's got big plans.
But Auburn, Stanwood in rotation for the time being would be like.
I'm super excited to hear that that grant covers substitutes. That's really wonderful. They've, they've thought of everything. So that's wonderful. Thank you. So, well, um, we need to, as a board, um, approve this overnight outdoor camp for Columbia Crest, and I would entertain a motion.
I'll motion.
One second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
I. I want to go to camp with you. That's super exciting.
All right. Consider approval of fire protection contract with South Hurst, trust you. Is that Jay? Are you going to address it? Is there anything we need to know about other than the contract itself? I know it's been with us for years.
No, it's just what we need to, to make sure we're safe over there.
I have a question. Oh. This is something we do every year. Okay, um, what about our other prior districts?
What, what do you mean?
Well, like.
Oh, our other schools?
East Pierce.
Yeah. Um, Warehouser, to my knowledge, is the only one that has this water retainment. Everybody else has um, fire hydrants. So Warehouser has to store water. And so it has to be inspected by the fire marshal.
Yeah. Is that what this is basically? This is just that story.
And, and inspecting it, making sure it meets all of the standards. Am I wrong? I think that's. All right. Um, thank you for asking. That was a really great question. So I would consider a motion to approve uh, the fire protection contract with South Hurst Fire.
So.
Second. Move and second. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. All right. We're gonna go to revision of policy thirty-two forty-one, student discipline. And Tracy, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, so much. You know, um. There were emergency rules that came out uh, from OSPI. That part of them have um, led to changing of policy procedures. And I gave you a side by side of the changes uh, in your board packet, but I also today made just something a little simpler because that, that's a lot to read. So. So this emergency ruling came from this disproportionality in our discipline data across the state. And, and you can see that suspensions or other exclusions affected uh, about fifteen percent of our students in foster care. Eight percent of homeless children, seven percent of students with disabilities. Sit almost seven percent of our Native American students and six point four percent of our black students. So these emergency rulings, the quick version of, of this is, um. Teachers were able to exclude students from class. Um, and that all had to be documented and noted and provided to the parents that your student was excluded. Just change this, this a little bit. Uh, students can be excluded as long as they're in supervision of the teacher. So that's a little bit of a ruling change there.
What, can you help me?
Yeah.
What does that look like?
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So that would mean in your classroom that you're trying other forms of discipline other than sending the student to the principal. So. That's what that looks like. So you might say to Sally, Sally, you're gonna come over here and work independently. Or um, you're going to engage in a five minute break. Um, those type of things that used to have to be documented. Now they don't. So you can try those different. Um, those is a different discipline or what they call classroom exclusions because you're not working on the curriculum or, or, or partaking in whatever the classes.
So just not leaving the room for that. And they're staying inside and it's not having to be documented.
Yes, thank you. A, a big look at this um, change was around uh, multi-tier support systems. So how you're supporting students in your classroom. Um, overall and in tier ones and how you're providing in classroom tier two intervention. So what does that look like? Also following uh, positive behavior intervention systems, PDAAS best practices. So that is something else that they really looked at when changing um, this policy. It also includes definitions of discretionary and non-discretionary discipline, which wasn't in the previous um, procedures. So discretionary discipline is like if a student gets in trouble uh, for violating the dress code or a tech violation and disruption. Um, those are judgment calls of what the discipline would look like from the principal. So, or whoever's uh, designee of the, of that. And then it really modified and talked about and pinpointed non-discretionary discipline, which are your big things, right? That you don't have a lot of leadway and it's pretty structured from the state, which will happen for discipline, such as bringing a weapons school or drugs. So those are, they kind of defined that a little bit more. It was pretty old and before. Um, and then a big one is um, the change of emergency expulsion to an emergency removal. So we have to use the wording removal now. So everything in our board policies or in our handbooks, it said expulsion has to be changed to removal. So.
But it's the same thing.
Pretty much, yes. Yes, it is the same thing. It did not change. But they're changing the wording, just that one word. Um, also in this policy is uh, really providing of aligning T-PAP, our teacher principal uh, evaluation program. And, and of the culture competency, diversity, inequality, inclusionary practices, making sure that teachers are following those and they're working more hand in hand. So aligning T-PAP with, with uh, CCDEI. And then the emergency, um, ruling just wanted boards to take a look at their policies. So. You can see in the edits that we did, a lot of our policy had a lot of um, procedure in it. Um. So that's, that you'll see a lot of the red is procedure pieces. Um, which the new policy is asking you just to select the policy and uh, the procedures, taking the procedure pieces out, but. And then tomorrow I'm going to work with principals on updating the procedure and what that looks like.
All right, um, go ahead. And I would consider a motion to approve. And if we have any questions after we make a motion, then we can include those in the discussion. So I'd uh, consider a motion to approve the revision to policy thirty-two forty-one. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions that you'd like to ask? I have a question. Um, of course I have a question. Sorry, I shouldn't. But, you know, we hear over the course of time that teachers have been, uh, they're losing their ability to have control of their classroom. Do you feel like this uh, hampers teachers in any way?
So the reason, another reason why they made this emergency ruling, and there was quite a bit of talk about it at the OSPI level because uh, when they made these changes, they didn't have parent groups part of this, this uh, changing of policy and the emergency ruling. Uh, but the main reason for doing that and doing it in a, in a hurry, they say, is to give teachers more, more uh, flexibility in their classroom. To not say, I excluded Sally and I have to write this down for ten minutes and call the parent afterwards. It's giving more flexibility and, and actually giving some of their time management back as well. So.
Great. I appreciate that insight. Uh, any other questions or discussions? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
And washing carries. Thank you. Uh, public acknowledgement. And thank you, Tracy, for presenting. So we received a donation from the union ILWU for student in need. Does, uh, Jade, you have?
Yeah, so that's something that happens every year. Just a very, very generous group. About two hundred dollars a, a year per student. Nope. It's a four hundred?
It's six hundred total.
Six.
Yeah, they give for every school. I'm sorry, do you mind?
No.
I really enjoy this and I've done it the last five years. I've been a part of it. I very much enjoy it. It's the um, Longshore's Union, Longshoreman's Union, and it's been about ten years now. Um, that they provide. We're not the only district, um, but they, for the elementary schools and they send two two hundred dollar gift cards per school. So we get six two hundred gift cards, yeah. Um, to students that the principal and the counselors kind of get together and say, you know, things are a little tough, maybe we can help out. Um, so these gift cards are presented to the students of just with the um, premise that, you know, you won an award. Um, and they've done this for about ten years now. Really, really, really. Yeah.
Thank you for sharing that insight.
Oh, I love.
That is great. Who writes them a thank you note?
So, um, I would always have the district office sign one. I would send it. So Carrie will be doing that this year. Um, and then also the students and the principals as well send.
Outstanding. Great. Thank you for taking for those details. Um, so that doesn't require us to take any action. It's under the, the dollar amount that would require action, but it is really nice to recognize them publicly. We're very grateful for the whole. All right, on to superintendent comments.
Yeah, thank you. So um, I'm trying to keep this brief, but there's a lot to brag about, about in the bill. And um, the first one is just the fact that, of course, this year we're focused on focusing on our student success, our student achievement. And uh, in order to do that, we're asking uh, that would increase our, our attendance. Uh, kids are in seats, they can learn. And if they're not, they're missing out. Um, so Sally and Tracy and others have been leading the charge. Um, what we're trying to do is get all of our teachers trained in what's called MTSS or multi-tier systems, which really what it means is that all students receive the instruction according to what they need to the various level they need. But it's not a destination. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a flow through. It's to try and get them all to the highest leveling class to get to. And so there's been an awful lot of achievement. And so there's been an awful lot of achievement accordingly. And, uh, again, just along with that same, we, we still are utilizing our money very well. All five schools are receiving, uh, tutoring, um, from the trust fund. Um, they're, they're all varied according to the need of each building, some of it before school, some are during school, some are after school. And, uh, so those are, those are working very well, and we continue to figure out how to best utilize that help. But, uh, we are the envy of most school districts, to be real honest, in that area. Um, we also want, I just want to also acknowledge that we have one, uh, graduating alliance graduate. And, uh, so like, a few tabs open here. And, uh, so while she wasn't able to be here, we do, I always want you to know that every time a new beginning's, um, a student graduates from our high school, this is Paige McQuillan. And, uh, she's not here, but she's given permission to say her name, and, and, uh, and so we're, we're awfully glad that, uh, our students, we're graduating, almost a hundred percent of our students.
I think these deserve a round of applause.
Yeah, and again, I mean, the truth is, is that we're starting to turn more and more heads around that region as well as the state, uh, which kind of leads me into our next piece, which is that, uh, recently, um, I want to thank you for the, uh, the privilege of being with you across the state and Spokane. All that, we missed you greatly, we understand, but we do miss you, and next year we're going to catch you back. Um, that we were in attendance and, uh, just we're, we're, we're starting to seem sort of, um, well, school district in many ways. Um, uh, Ronald Alissonberger, for instance, uh, she serves as our small schools advisory chair for Washington State, and, and also she did a presentation, um, on just how we're getting things right, uh, in Washington State. Um, transportation is a big part of that funding, uh, making sure we get our kids to school so they can learn. Uh, so just a lot of successes, and it was very well attended, even though it's the last session and the last day. And, uh, and, and, and people were asking a lot of questions about how things are going. Um, next, I'd like to, um, recognize, um, it's not official recognition yet, but for all of us in the room and, and all those who are watching, uh, January is our school board appreciation month. And I didn't think it was too early to say that, uh, so that we can, as we lead up to January, we really appreciate all the time and effort that you give, uh, volunteer, so that we, um, have, you know, the policies and procedures in place and the direction that we need this school district to move forward. And, and, uh, you're doing a really great job, in my opinion, I appreciate the way that you're so, um, so tied in to all the activities and to all the things that are really beneficent. So an early thank you, and then more than. Um, it was really a pretty banner year uh, for sports. Um, we, so in addition to our academic achievement, we have many students who are doing very well. And I'm just, I'm not going to be able to highlight all these, but, uh, in as far as our fall athletes go, we have many who are in the south, uh, Puget Sound, Ollie, uh, um, and, um, one of those is Colton Rush, yeah, across country, there's, uh, Cool, uh, Rod, and, and, uh, I wish I, I wish I did have time to read everybody, but it's just so vast, we beat her a while, and so, um, but we had for cross-country, we had for swimming. Um, we, our swim team also received the league's boys' championship award. Um, and, uh, volleyball, um, soccer. We actually had someone who was the keeper of the season, and also Coach Benny, who was, was the soccer coach of the season. And, uh, so our coaches and our players, our student athletes are doing really well. In tennis, in football, and all in all, this is what I want to get seen, was even though I had a grant total with fifty-two ball scholarship athletes, maintaining a three-point-five kilogram GPA while participating in a very, in a very. What's that?
Which is why we can continue to support athletics for students.
Yes.
Programs, all programs, not just athletic.
Yeah, what we're trying to do is we're trying to get something for everybody to succeed in the school. We want everyone to be engaged and to feel honored and known and, and supported. And, um, so that, that continues to be our, our quest. Okay, and then just real briefly, um, as you, as you know, we don't have our, our student reps here today, or they're awfully busy tonight. Uh, but Bailey said, you know, would you please see that the fall is red? So, uh, so dear members of the school board, Superintendent Brower, I apologize for missing the night, but tonight basketball's conflict. The girls' team had their first game Monday, both Farsoni and JV were able to defeat Ording. The boys had a close, uh, game Monday and, and are at Fox tonight. You can catch up on all the fall athletics success by checking out Skip Smith's, I'm just quoting here, by checking out, uh, Skip Smith's Facebook reporting, Kingville Sports News, a shout out to him. As for all the students, are very thankful for his ongoing support. All schools have winter programs, and I know a lot of you have been to a lot of those. And, uh, we won tonight before we came here. Uh, and Spirit Weeks, the high school continues with their annual winter wishes assembly. The high school band also had a Santa event. Student involvement is high, tryout for Little Mermaids have begun. We are looking forward to this presentation in the new year. And then last but not least, Knowledge Bowl and Chess Club have been, have both started preparing for competitions later in the school year. So as you can see, there's just an awful lot going on, on every, on every given night here. Okay, and then finally, to, uh, to finish out, I wanted to ma- mention that, um, we are, we are fulfilling our role for our capital project levy as, as, um, as was noted earlier by Krista, um, that we are working hard, uh, to get bands, work with vendors, uh, and, and to communicate what our means are for our track and our field. Um, that is what we promise the voters, that's, that's what we'll remember. Uh, we're also fortunate because of some grants that we might be able to do a grandstand in addition or get closer to it. And it's, uh, but I want, we always want the community to know everything that is going on. Um, and, um, and that is what's going on. So stay tuned for probably another public forum coming to a, coming to a theater near you. Um, in the new year, as we start to get all the bits together and, and we start to, you know, consider doing those choices made that are going to finally allow us to start doing things like to, like, like host tournaments, like be so postseason play, like actually have a playing surface that doesn't go for three practices, then it's done until game night. Uh, all those sorts of things. And so we will keep you updated as proposals come in and as we get, um, closer to that, and that will be pretty fast, so. We, let's see. I don't, I think we just, I just wanted to express my gratitude to Paula Fittipodi as board chair. Uh, it was a, it was a busy year. And, uh, an awful lot was accomplished by our board members and, and, uh, things are really moving forward and moving onward. We're a rep, and, and so I want to express my appreciation to you as board chair for the time that you gave. And, and, uh, just also express my gratitude to all of you for everything you're doing to, um, to, to do it's right for kids, so that's.
Thank you. We're gonna go on to board comments, Karen.
Sure. Sure. But, um, I want to say congratulations to your new seat. And, um, just for all that you do for the district, for the kids, and, um, take on the new role. And congratulations to Paula for, for your seat. And, and just thank you for continuing to give and just be here for all of us, because you guys are great leaders and, um, you know, role models for, uh, the district and us here on the board. So, thank you. And I, um, want to thank Krista for such an adept report. And, you know, I want to say from all the, um, meetings that I've attended, where, you know, we've got over budgets and everything, I understood this one the most. That was a very well put together, very well explained, and it made sense, I hope the public makes it as well. So, um, and, uh, I think that we have, you know, we've gotten past the, the ditters and the excitement of the beginning of the year, and now we're into the brass tacks of just making stuff happen, and I think we're into the busy time of the year. So it's busy for all of us, we're just all gung ho and we're trying to just make things happen for the district. And, um, I want to encourage parents and anybody that's listening, if there's anything that you want addressed, please reach out to legislators and let them know. I mean, their legislators are waiting to hear from not only us, but their constituents and, and just the, the needs of what's going on in the district. So, um, just, I just want to encourage everybody for that. And just thank you all for coming and, and continuing to give to our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Travis?
Uh, yeah, just wanted to say thank you to the students for all the hard work. And, yeah, and I appreciate, as a former, as a former teacher, super stoked about that. Um, and a big thank you to Jason Hunter right now, who's doing, um, uh, performances with elementary schools and putting them on, and a lot of extra work that, if you guys don't know, I don't think he gets a lot of money for it, and I don't mean that disrespectfully to us. I mean, he is a hundred percent the most dedicated one, he's just an amazing person, so a hundred percent to him. And thank you ladies, that's really, oh, and have a great holiday season, everybody who's listening at home. Hug your kids, enjoy your time, and be safe. Read a book.
Thank you, Travis.
Yeah.
Ashley, I'm good.
Thank you. Thank you so, so much for what you and your, your group are doing. Um, I can't say enough good things about all of them. Your drivers, your mechanic, your, um, you, you know, just can't say enough good things about. All of it, when I, every time I stop, stop by transportation, which I like to do, I like to visit, visit with them. And, um, just to see the atmosphere and to be a part of that. It's just been just incredible, and so very grateful, very grateful. And thank you for your advocacy for camps.
Yeah.
For what you're doing to make sure our kids get that experience. And just can't thank you enough, I know it takes a lot more time and energy to do what you're doing. And honestly, it's, it's. And, uh, thank you, Krista, for all that you do. I, you can drive by here any night and see her light on, which that's gonna stop. At least for a little while, take a break. But thank you for, that all the, all the energy that you put into making sure that we understand well what's going on, so. And, and Darcy, thank you for that policy, that was, uh, uh, interesting one. A lot went into that one. And I appreciate very much all that you've done. And, um, so.
All right, good.
All right, thank you. Well, everyone has said all of, all of the really important things, um, student art was, is just so beautiful. Thank you to all the students, it, it, this is why we're.
And you guys have to stay for a picture, it was required with all the art.
Okay, yes. Um, and then I, so I'm not going to reiterate what everybody said, although my heart is so full of gratitude for all of the things that they mentioned. I do want to, um, build on what Karen said about our legislators, and what I'm hearing from them is we can't expect and we do not expect to get any additional funding this year. However, I do think that we could maybe grab, uh, get some partnership and work in removing legislation that maybe is outdated or burdensome or causing unfunded mandates. So while we may not be able to get additional funding, we need to put on our thinking caps around the things that really have outused their, um, their usefulness, outlived their usefulness, that are costing us money, the fact that we can ask them to remove. And that might be something that we could, you know, build bridges and work on. But I think we all need to be thinking about that, because we don't know, uh, each other's areas as well. So we need to bring your stuff forward to us, and we'll, then we'll advocate the heck out of it, drive them crazy until they agree to help us out with it. So, thank you for all you've done, happy, very happiest holidays. I'm glad that we only have one meeting this month, so that we can all spend time with our families. Um, and thank you to all who have come for just taking the work. With that, we're gonna close this meeting at eight twenty-five.
Nobody move.